Good evening. My name is Ryan Kelly and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is Wednesday, October 8th, and the time is 6:43 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here present. Eric Holly, I'm sorry, Eric Lindstrom, the chairman, is not here yet, but should be arriving shortly. I am Ryan Kelly, Vice Chairman. Rick Smith?
Here.
Jim Stewart, professional engineer?
Here.
Benjamin Savia, secretary, is absent.
And Commissioner Savia wanted me to express his sincere apologies for not being here tonight.
Appreciate that, thank you. Secretary, Paul Fernandez?
Here.
Mark Zamary is absent. Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator?
Here via Zoom.
Hi Kathleen. And Andrew Brotman, Inlands Wetlands Enforcement Officer?
Here.
Before we start, I will read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inlands Wetlands Mission Statement, the objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inlands, wetlands, and watercourses within the town of Monroe. For meeting procedure, I'd like to note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, you'll be automatically muted and unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak during the public participation portion of the hearing of the meeting, please use the raise hand function. If you're participating via telephone, press star nine to activate the raise hand feature. Staff will announce your name and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. The video feature has also been disabled from public participation. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title, if applicable, at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission, during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the Chair of the Commission or the Acting Chair of the Commission. Tonight, that is myself, Ryan Kelly. After any and all comments pro and opposition or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro con, pro and con, specific to inland wetland-related matters. All other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay. 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 We'll start out with general public participation. Is there anybody in the chambers that has any comments of anything inland-wetland related that are not before us in the agenda tonight or in the near future? Anyone online?
There is nobody online.
Okay. Then shall we move to the regulated activities?
Regulated activities. Yeah, we have one application that's in front of you for acceptance.
Moose Hill, okay. So IWC-2025-06, file number 151554261 Moose Hill Road, for first construction of single-family residence and land clearing within the upland review area. Do we have anybody here to present? Hello?
My name is Jim Fracker, 50 Harvard Site Director. I'm here to ask you to get permission from the Wetlands Commission to build a single-family home in the review area.
Andrew, is there?
So for tonight, this is just a determination for what type of a hearing we're going to have.
Yep.
Staff has reviewed, has reviewed all of this. Staff does have comments out there that need to be addressed and will be addressed.
Okay. Do we have, do we have those comments or questions in the documents?
I haven't seen the engineers' comments yet. I have not seen the health, the health department's comments. They're in the works. I had some comments and all of my comments have been.
I asked down the line perhaps, maybe starting with you?
Wow.
Stewart, any questions?
The only questions I would have is they got a lot of, they got trees shown, large trees on the plans. If they could mark which ones they're proposing to remove and which ones they're proposing to save. I assume the one in the driveway is proposed to go and they've got a pipe going through one over here that I don't know whether it could be saved or not, but.
Potentially.
Everything on the plan is a 30-plus inch tree.
Yeah.
And I say it, I think they'll have to go. They're going to be kind of along the way. There are.
Obviously, the ones are on the street right away. They'll just.
I'll tell you my dad. If you look at the, towards the left side, one on the left side is dead, one is split right in half. I think we're in the, probably the front yard.
Yeah.
That would be a top one to save. Great, that's the area. We have one right now that we have to preserve.
Yeah, okay.
Might be one at the very left side of the subject, we might get to save that one.
If you would mark the one, mark them that they're being all removed or what you could say, that would be helpful for me.
It was my understanding, all the trees that are shown on here are the trees, are everything that's above 30-inch, but all of which are slated to go. I did make a site visit out here and it's a fairly heavily wooded lot, so. What's shown are the larger, more significant trees, but there's, I don't think we have an inventory of how many trees are coming out, but. Essentially, everything from the limited disturbance down to the street would need to be removed in order for the development.
Where, where on Moose Hill?
This is close to the intersection of Mohegan, where Mohegan, Moose Hill. It's on Moose Hill, heading north on the left side.
Any other questions from you? Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, the only thing is a location map. It's a nice location map, but it doesn't really show where it is. Oh, there it is. Okay, never mind. No, I've got no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, so the wetland markers, I'm not. I know it's on, it was, alluded to, when was the wetland delineated?
That was fairly recently, well. James?
2022.
Okay.
What's the best drawing?
The map that's reduced, the 18 by 24, Rick? The 18 by 24 sheet, that's what's proposed. The other two, 24 by 36 drawings that you have there are alternative one and alternative two.
A lot of woodland, how close to the wetlands are we?
I could answer that if you, if you need help.
The back corner of the house is 22 feet.
Gotcha. Oh, okay. I see the WL line, yeah.
But just to be clear, the deck that is proposed is within 17 and 15 foot.
I see the corners there.
Of the wetland flags, of the wetland line. The house itself is 22 feet off.
Would you accept us doing a sidewalk, site visit?
Anything.
I, I, I'd like to get the laid land at some point, if it's possible.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think that probably makes sense, right? Stayed about that now.
Well, I'll set up a site visit, just while we're sitting here, how many commissioners would like to go on that sidewalk? Okay, so we'll have an actual.
Raise my hand.
We'll have an actual meeting now. Okay.
Great.
Yep.
Is there anything that you'd like me to have staked out?
I'm obviously going to want to be conscious of where the wetland line, wetland line is. And if you have the corners of the house and the corners of the deck, that's great. I'm not concerned about the other stuff in the front yard. More concerned with the locations closer to the wetlands.
Okay, so Jim, have the, the wetlands is already flagged. Have the limited disturbance flagged and the layout of the house, right?
Yeah, that's it.
That'd be fine.
Commissioner Fernandez, do you have any?
No questions, I'll. Like to.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that all the limited disturbance is going to be lawn?
Yes, it'll, it'll be lawn.
And the demarcation of the wetlands?
We're, we also plan on building a, a stone wall in the back to separate the wetland from the, so the property owner has said it's hard where he knows where the wetlands are. We also are planning on putting 30 plants along that wall too. It's been recommended by myself, scientist. And up top, we want to put some dogwood trees along the road to replace the, some of the big ones that we had to cut down.
Thank you. I was going to ask about what's coming down and what's going back up, so thank you.
Part of the proposal has a fairly good demarcation in the back line, both boulders and shrubs. That'll make a clear delineation between the developed property and.
So as far as determination, does anybody have any thoughts or would like to make a motion?
If there's, you know, if there's, if there's any suggestion for a public hearing versus a regular hearing, if it is a public hearing, there needs to be a reason for the public hearing, whether it is public interest or significant impact. Or if you decide that it's a regular hearing, then you just motion to make it a regular hearing.
It feels like a regular hearing.
I'm motion for regularly.
A motion?
Anybody who's got a reason why not?
Second. A motion by Commissioner Smith and a second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor?
Can I have a motion to hold a regular hearing for IWC 2025-06, opening at the next regularly scheduled meeting on October 22nd?
That's right, thank you.
Wednesday, October 22nd, 6:30 here.
Hey, do we, is there any notice please?
No, we'll be. No, we've noticed the, no, we've already noticed for the pending application. So you're good there. I would have all of those comments addressed. And I'll be in touch with you tomorrow or the next day to try to set up a sidewalk.
Great.
While all the commissioners are here for the sidewalk, do we want to talk about a day or a time? Or just try to hammer that out through an email?
Well, a suggestion, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not the one that's probably going to have a problem with it. But come out with a suggestion of this day or that date and.
Yep, I would say any day next week, if we could do it at like a 2 o'clock in the afternoon would be great.
At 2 o'clock?
I'd be happy to be there if that would help you.
Uh, yeah, we would like to have you there.
Great, thank you.
All right, I'll set it up through email.
If we can just stay away from Monday and Fridays for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
That week before. The week before, was that the week, the 21st? I think Thursday or Friday. Friday doesn't work for Commissioner Fernandez, maybe that's Thursday.
Thursday, we could do it next Thursday or the fall.
Next Thursday. I could do next Wednesday.
Okay. Let's shoot with that.
Well. Oh, it's my turn.
And the time is 7 o'clock and Eric Lindstrom, chairman, just walked in.
Andrew, is that next Thursday, I mean, the following Thursday, 16th?
I'm not looking at a calendar, but you tell me since you're looking at a calendar.
Thursday, the 16th, I can, I could do one, is it Wednesday, the 15th?
Okay.
Wednesday, 15th.
Again, I'll confirm all of this through email.
Thank you.
But let's tentatively put it on there for Wednesday, the 15th at 2 o'clock. All right?
Thank you. Okay, moving on in the agenda, next is subdivision report referral. We have ZCA-2025-02, file number 1032, 909 Main Street. This application is in, Planning and Zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission is part of the application. A report required from Inlands Wetlands Commission on the implications of the zone change. Hello?
Good evening, John. I'm here as the owner of 909.
Just state your name as well. No, you're okay.
Michael Porco, P O R C L. I have submitted plans, I don't know if you have. So I've owned the property at 909 Main Street for 20-some years, 25 years, and tried to develop it and the rest of the zone, which I want, has become obsolete in today's environment with the adoption of Pepper Street, industrial properties in Monroe complex. Found that it is not conducive for that particular zone on that location on Main Street, Monroe, either entering or leaving the city. So my request is to change it from I-1 to B-2. The proposed business use is more suitable for a main corridor entering and leaving Monroe as it will add more jobs and attract to new investments and increase the tax revenue. The environmental proposal change from industrial to business will have a positive change for the community. The transition will reduce traffic, rough traffic, lower noise, pollution, and improve overall aesthetics of the area and in keeping with the newly adapted Main Street design structure. That was about it. That's in paragraph 5.4. There is a little bit of a wet. There is a little bit of a wet stream on the right side of the property that has been a nuisance for myself and the state of Connecticut. That particular culvert that the culvert that goes underneath 25 is inadequate to handle the water and it gets plugged up regularly. So I have been in contact with the state DOT, they've been out there a number of times, I've been out there myself. It's right on the property line, as indicated on the map, and it gets climbed up because it's a 24-inch RCP pipe. And nobody maintains it. They were here a year recently with Tony Palerme from DOT and he said, next time you need it, just crawl up some of the handle. But as far as increasing the pipe size from a 24-inch to twice capacity is not in the budget right now.
Do we, Andrew, do we have?
That's a whole other topic, which I'm going to come in front of the board at some point to address that issue on more permanent nature, when I have a site plan development that I have in place with the potential tenant that is in.
Can we have the, the plan?
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Anything?
No, because there, there's no proposal for, for development.
Is there wetlands on the property?
There is wetlands to the back of the property. Is that not shown on that plan?
On this one.
It's, and I'm going to interject here for just one moment. It is not shown on the plan because all that is in front of you tonight is for the zone change for the entirety of the property. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. A zone change for the entirety of the property. There is a valid excavation and fill permit that is open and valid and they're in the middle of for the property, so this has come in front of this commission before, for that excavation and fill permit. And I apologize if my internet is having some issues. For an excavation and fill permit, so you guys have seen this. So at the moment, they're not expanding beyond their limit of disturbance that was already approved. What they're really asking is for a zone change from industrial zone to a business district. And if anything, our business district uses are less intensity than our industrial uses. So from an impact to the wetland perspective, being able to give them more options related to business uses is an advantage.
Could you just go into a little bit more detail on what the difference between this, the current zone to what the, the new B-2 zone is, like, and you just hit a couple of highlights, but is there a wetland difference from our perspective?
There's not a wetlands difference, it's a use difference. So our industrial zones, you think about manufacturing, warehousing, processing. Our industrial zones have performance standards related to hazardous material and noise and contamination as it relates to what's, you know, on the property. You have more risk of someone manufacturing something related to hazardous materials or, you know, items you wouldn't necessarily want next to a wetland, a self-storage facilities, things of that nature, that's all permitted. Going into the B-2 district, now you're getting into more commercial retail. So office space, retail space, instructional retail, things of that nature. It's, it's the transition zone from the industrial to the business district. So the idea that now you're adding, you're not subtracting, there's still a lot of industrial uses that are permitted in our B-2 zone, but that you're adding now the opportunity to go a little more towards the commercial retail component of it. Our commercial retail uses are, would be less of an impact to our potential wetlands than a straight-up industrial zone.
And everything else around it, looking at this little map in the corner here, there are other B-2s, B-1s?
The B-2s across the street, so what they're asking for is they're asking to basically expand that B-2 across the street. Cube Smart is to the north of it and then you have industrial districts, you know, all around it. But there's some, you know, the, across the street is the warehouse, they, I think they house the carnival.
All right.
The carnival items and things of that nature. But again, the applicant can expand on this, but the, my understanding is, is the reasoning for coming in is to expand the the breadth of uses that can be used there in order to hopefully get the property developed. But what they're increasing is the opportunity for traditional commercial retail uses. Which again, from a potential impact to wetlands, I think has much less of a risk than a straight-up industrial use.
Got it.
And it's currently RF-1?
No, it's currently industrial 1.
Yeah, I want the gray, you see it?
Oh, I see. Gray? Right. What's the, oh, it's RF?
RF is residential farming.
Yeah, so that's behind it? Yellow behind it?
Yellow behind it.
Yeah.
And how's that accessed?
Kind of right in the middle.
The RF-1?
Sure.
Yeah. How do you even get to that property?
See what we're talking about, sir?
This RF-1? That's kind of.
Property right behind it, how is that property accessed? Do you know?
That's residential.
Yeah, is there a road, is there a road behind that that accesses that property?
There's just a right-of-way from from Main Street. That three houses access.
So there are, there are property, residential properties already in there?
Yes, there's two or three around it, correct.
And they're, they were informed of this?
Any what?
Have they been informed of this application?
Oh, yes, the mailings went out. We had the copy of all the, certified copy of the mailings that went out.
Also, in terms of this, there's not a plan to develop, it's just about what it could be used for.
Right.
We don't have, we don't have a potential use right.
Look, there are three houses existing back there.
On the, on the south side. There's one in the back and there's two on the left.
Okay. All right, so Kathleen, what?
I believe Kathleen's internet must have gone down.
There, is there a pile of rocks? Is that the, the problem, all the rocks?
That's correct. The rock is to stabilize the fillers project. And we stopped because of a couple, a couple of reasons. One is that the there were some telephone poles that are on the right-of-way, which is owned by the town of Monroe, that we asked EverSource to move because they were on my property. So they moved them, but then they removed the old poles. So we're in the process of trying to get the poles, poles removed because the slope of the bank has to be developed. As I pull on teeth with them, move wires. But the rocks are there to stabilize the fill and prevent any kind of silt infiltration into the lower level of the.
Do you have any?
Hundred-foot setback.
Do you have any timeline of when you expect to propose something or you're just trying? Or you're just trying to get a change so you can offer more opportunity?
Last year I'm trying to get it.
Yeah.
So we, I've been, I've been actively trying to get this developed for many years now. It's, it's like beating. A somber drum and come to realize that the particular zone and all the feedback that you receive. The zone doesn't lend itself to that particular area. Pepper Street is more conducive for industrial than Main Street. Nobody wants to invest in the property development to put it on Main Street. It's not, doesn't work.
Also, from an aesthetic position, I would say that in general, the town, like it's, it's, it's the gateway. It's the entrance into the town from Newtown. So the idea of having something that's a little more aesthetically pleasing related to a commercial building is attractive to, to the planning and zoning department.
Right. If I understand what you said earlier about the types of businesses that can move in there, they're, they're potentially less impactful than industrial because they're more commercial, so.
Yes.
In an ideal scenario, you would, you would rather not have industrial and rather just have commercial, so it's.
Also, the way the lot, the way the lot is set up with the excavation and fill permit, his pad that he's padding out, and yes, it is the site that has the rocks right next to it. The pad that he's padding out is front-loaded. You know, it's, it's very close to the front property line. So whatever building is there is actually going to be very prominent compared to some of the other industrial buildings in that area that can be set back a little further. And it just has to do with where his wetlands are on the property and the stream and, and where it was able to be padded out. So we as a town have approved it in both inland wetlands and planning and zoning for that pad at that location. And again, whatever building they put there is actually going to be pretty prominent compared to what some of the other industrial buildings in that area are that are a little bit further set back from the road.
Okay, motion to give a positive referral for a subdivision report of 909 Main Street from the, or change of zone from I1 to B2.
We have a motion for a zone change. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. Home paper?
All right.
It's unanimous. All right.
There you go. We're moving.
There it is.
Thank you.
Progress.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Just going to see what you're going to get in there.
That might, that might do.
Yeah.
That one.
Yeah.
All right. Moving down the line in the agenda.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Kathleen. We have the, we have no regular meetings tonight, no public hearings. Deliberation, none tonight. I think this brings us down to the IWC agent activities report, agent approvals.
Agent activities report. So we have, I issued an agent approval, IAA 25-26, file number 1553, is 458 Purdy Hill Road. And it was an agent approval for a gravel patio with Belgium block edging around the edges. It's in the upland review area. It's 25 by 25, so it's 625 square feet. It's located 40 feet away from what is a man-made drainage swale, but that's what makes it wetlands. But it's 40 feet away from that and separated by established lawn between the proposed patio and the drainage swale. Conditions of the approval that I gave was to install silt fence with pre and post-construction inspections. I saw no need for wetland markers. It's, it's a drainage swale right there. This is 458 Purdy Hill Road. This is that property that we were talking about, I think briefly last time, with the fence right by the entrance of Wolf Park. Where we're at with that is we're waiting on the 15-day appeal period. We haven't heard anything yet. And as soon as that's over, I'm sure they're going to start construction on this and I'll go out and inspect silt fence. Next is IAA 25-27, file number 1555, is 171 Church Street. Proposed in-ground pool, poolhouse, garage, and tree removal within the URA. So what they're proposing is a 50-foot by 32-foot separate garage. It encroaches, the garage portion of this, it encroaches 20 feet into the upland review area. So that's 80 feet off of the actual wetlands. There are a number of trees that need to come down with this, with this proposal. And in this is a plan to replace each tree, one for one. Not caliper per caliper, but one for one. There are a couple of large trees that do need to come down in order to make this happen. It's a very wooded area. Staff has no issue with having these trees come down so long as new trees are being planted. And I'd actually encourage them to plant more shrubs than trees because they'd be more beneficial to the wetlands than the actual trees. It's, it's fairly wooded now, so. Yep.
Do you have a proposed planting for this?
Yes. And they? And this was put together by the homeowner, reviewed by me. As far as the, what's being proposed as far as new plantings goes, in this proposal, it just says native plants as per Yukon's list of native trees and native shrubs. An actual quantity of how many, of what variety, hasn't been submitted. But I'm, I mean, when the time comes to doing the plantings, I'll be sure to be out there to inspect them and make sure they are native plants.
So what about the cali?
Caliper inch? The new trees are two-inch caliber trees. So that's the garage portion of this, of this proposal. In addition to that, there's a 30-foot by 32-foot pool with patio around that pool and a shed, which is more or less a poolhouse right next to it. And that encroaches 15 feet into the upland review area, leaving 85 feet of woods between wetlands and the limit of disturbance. It's a native upland woodland area. And it's going to remain that after they get done with the, with the new plantings. Conditions of this approval were to have silt fence with inspections pre and post-construction. Wetland markers for sure on this. Plantings. And no backwashing into the wetlands. I put that on as.
Right, yep. Green, that's where we go.
A lot of pools, a lot of pools are either saltwater pools now or there's something else where they're not supposed to, where they're not, they don't require backwashing. I don't quite understand it, but either way, no wa, no backwashing into the wetlands is, you know, one of the conditions of the approval.
Actually done.
Questions on that? It was far enough away. It was pretty, you know, it's a pretty nice-sized project, but because it was that far away, I felt comfortable doing it as agent approval.
Sounds good. Did not show.
Okay. And then we have a wetland violation. So IWV 2025-08, file number 1552, 186 Purdy Hill Road, clearing, filling in and storing of equipment in wetlands and/or upland review area. I was investigating a water issue on the budding property to see where this water was coming from via budding property owner. This is an increase of water over the last 15 years coming onto his property. So we were out there looking at it and while I was out there looking at it, when I went over and I could see into this other property, it seemed as though the grade has been elevated. You have pictures of this in your packets. So as I'm investigating this, so then I came back and I started looking into it and it seems like there was a, a similar violation back in 2020. Back in 2020, there was a violation on this property, which is 186 Purdy Hill Road. There was a pile of soil that was being dumped over there with construction equipment being stored there. And there was, so there was a violation that was issued back in 2020. Now, I do have notes that it was resolved, that the, that, that the violation was resolved. However, I don't have a, it's just a handwritten in the file saying that it was resolved. And there's no official notice of resolution to this violation. So the violation is technically still open.
The original violation.
The original violation is still open.
These pictures reflect something that's been there since 2020. I don't, it doesn't look like this been.
So if you look at the pictures that I sent you, what you'll see is. All right, so photograph one is, you know, construction equipment being stored back in, and that does seem to be upland review area. Picture number two is the same. Picture number three, again, it's building materials. Picture number four, again, building materials being stored. Photograph number five is actually the neighbor's property and this is the, the water course. So there's a, a small pond on the neighbor's property that runs to the back of Mr. Batista's property. Photo number six is trying to depict what I think is fill being brought in. It looks to be about two foot of fill. And you can see off to the left over there that looks like, you know, healthy wetlands down there. And it looks like that fill, and this is just from observation. All right, but it looks like that fill is about two feet high.
Like that was meant to like change the water course?
It seems as though it was meant to level out that area and dry that area out.
Right, it might have been wetland.
It might have been wetlands and is now not. Now, the, the, the violation back in 2020, that violation was specifically for a pile of soil that was being stored that was slightly in the upland review area, okay? And the construction equipment being stored in the back of this, okay? Now, again, it says that it was resolved, that, that that violation was resolved. And I just have no documentation of it, so, so I asked Mr. Batista here. Now, one thing worth noting, the original violation was for Mr. Batista's brother, who is no longer with us. So Manny Batista is here to answer, to explain what happened back there. Would you state your name and address?
I want to live with.
Mr. Batista, Mr. Batista, would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Manuel Batista. I live in two. I hope that me and my brother, we decided, we were planning to build a house, a new house, and not the old house now. But when we were going to build a house, we have to load. So we bought some field from another job. Instead of throwing the way and bring a layer of fill that, we burned there. Since at that time was winter, the, the land was wet. So we put them on the pile where it was more hard to spread them around later on. So the fact that I don't remember who was there. And so, okay, you spread them around, you need to pull out the permit. So, or a fence around, what they call a.
Silt fence?
Yes, you fence around a little like that. Then you pull out the permit, you can split the, level that off and do that. And they, they keep the mindset, this here, you gotta. You, this is not commercial, you gotta, okay. Now, somebody broke down with the weighty story. I bought the machine there to load them and took them to the dump, which I did, took them to the dump. And with them, yeah, level them off, let it, so was easy for me to cut the grass. So now I plan to, wait, I got finished with the sale. I want to sell everything I got. I got them there, but I have to move them there right away. Of course, I have to. Still there. That's it.
So back in 2020, there was, he was also told to stop doing business. He was operating a business out of the property and that ceased. So, so the business got moved. Now, the one thing, I can't tell whether that pile of soil that was there, that. First off, there was no, there, there was no application for resolving this, okay? It was, it was a notice of violation and then it says that the violation is resolved. So if he was told to get a permit to resolve this, we don't have any record of it.
No, he, no, we, we pulled out the permit, the final, the, the door to.
But you did not pull a permit for that, correct?
I did not to, no.
You did spread the dirt around.
I didn't touch the door. He told me not to touch it. I don't know.
Where did that pile of soil go to?
To me?
Where did that pile of soil go to? The pile of soil that was there on-site?
Is that still there? I didn't touch it in one.
That pile is still sitting where it was?
When you say it's about two feet tight.
Okay.
That's where, that note that you said, you said it's something that's about 15 feet tight.
These are, these are new pictures?
The pictures you have are all new pictures.
All new pictures.
The pictures that I have from 2020.
Pictures, picture seven.
Seven.
Yeah, there's a picture seven. There's a pile of dirt in the back corner.
Okay, and these are pictures from 2020, which was the app, was the, the previous violation?
Well, but the same dirt, but, yeah.
If you would think over five years, it would have, it would have, something would have grown on it by now, you would think, you know?
Well, if you move right now, you, you can't even see that. It's full of the grass, the range, everything.
You're saying since 2020, nothing's changed?
No.
All right, so Andrew, what do you suggest that we do here?
So, you know, certainly I think, you know, there needs to be a remediation to this. And I'm, you know, I'm not sure how you want to remediate it, whether you want to remediate it administratively. It's a little hard for me to take a look at it and figure out, you know, what was done versus what just naturally is occurring now.
Well, I mean, the obvious thing is to clear out all the debris, construction material. So.
You know, mark it as, mark it as wetlands. I don't know if you want to pull out all of that material, that's two feet of material.
I think that the soil scientists can go there and do a little report, do some augers and see how deep the fill is and come up with a little plan. And then we can look at the plan and then decide if you want.
No, I, you didn't totally fill to the back.
What's that? Say it again.
I did not totally fill to the back. The one you feel like to tell is there one, I can't see the picture. I can't see. Tell you in the picture, everyone can. Tell you in the beach, everyone.
All right, let's get to clean up there, take a look at what's there and.
Don't, don't worry, it isn't, be able to tell how deep it is and, and whether there were wet soils underneath it.
Okay.
Easily.
The one, the one that I could better, I see how you, you level.
Just pass that pile.
Picture six is definitely a fill, filled.
Yeah.
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 Happened.
It's leveled, it's not, right.
This is the main concern right here. This is, I have a feeling that this is all wetlands down here and this is all fill that has been brought in and filled in.
Oh, there was, I want them right there. I may be, I may be responsible for that, but that was like, I don't see them growing fill when I was there.
So you're saying all of that two feet of fill that's there, picture number six, that's always been there?
I didn't touch anything in the way. That's a lot I brought there in the front. It is almost in the middle of the, of the land. It was there when I bought the house. I don't know if that was like, I never, I never checked it out.
Mr. Batista, when did you buy this land with your brother?
Uh, I don't remember exactly about two.
Over a decade ago?
15, 20 years ago.
All right, so I agree, Jim.
Did you have some more comments on?
No, I, I just think, you know, soil scientist, then come up with a report. I mean, if he, if he looks at it and says it's been there for 20 years.
So you know what? Maybe that would be a wetland scientist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of a, a soil scientist, a soil scientist is going to go out there and he's going to delineate wetlands. He's going to do.
Same, you know, he'll hopefully the same sort of thing.
Yeah.
Come up with a remediation plan or, or determine, you know, he'll be able to probe, put his little probe through there and see what, see the type of soil it's brought in and see, see if there's a, there's a layer of topsoil or something. And he'll be able to figure out what, what had happened and.
Okay.
I think so.
Between that and obviously removing all the obvious stuff.
Yeah, cleaning up all the, all the construction debris and everything that's.
Yeah, that, there is some man that I want to clean, but.
So can we allow him to start that project now?
Yeah, we have a.
You told me to do anything, not touch.
Right, I told you, until we have this meeting, correct?
I, I, I used to, that, that, I guess, I'm guilty of that.
Right, yeah, have him start cleaning it up and then let's determine just how far he has to go with removing soil, if any.
Okay, so Mr. Batista, you understand we're asking you to get a soil scientist in to evaluate.
Do I have to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he'll, he'll come together with a report and present us with a report. And then we'll go to, and then we'll figure out what the next step is. In the meantime, you are permitted to go in and, and clean out all of what is foreign material out of that area.
So that I can?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, all the equipment.
All the equipment, all the bricks, all the, anything that's not natural.
But the field that was there, am I responsible for that?
I would leave it alone for now until we get our, our, our report from the soil scientist.
You mean, if, if every shower puts something there, I'm the one responsible for removing it.
Yes, you would be responsible for removing it because it is your property.
If needed.
If needed.
If necessary.
Right, yes, if necessary.
Say he has to do that until the report comes in.
Correct.
Understand the degree of it, so let's not say he has to remove it. We have to determine.
I'm going to first.
Correct.
Right, let's, let's not, put something in front of him that. You're going to hire, you're going to hire a professional to look at it and come up with a little idea.
You know, fresh up to do that, I, I have a.
We cannot recommend people, but if you just do a Google search on either a soil scientist or a wetland scientist, you'll find, you'll find somebody who can, who can do this report. If they have any questions, they can call me and I'll explain to them what we're looking for.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, if I just clean up all the garbage out.
Mm-hmm.
You put some trees around that you say maybe, what, you tell me what I should put there. I thought let's, I didn't leave that alone. Instead of going like that, it's going to cost me money and it's going to cost me headaches and I just put some trees there and then tell me what.
I am not a voting member.
No.
Yeah, what, what we're asking you to do, sir, right now is just remove anything that is not natural. Leave all trees, all shrubs, dead or alive, and just remove the mechanical and the stone.
Yeah, the stones.
Construction. Right.
Construction. So what he's asking is if we can, he's asking the commission if we would be okay with not having a soil scientist, not having a wetland scientist, and us come, okay?
Right, no, no, we need to understand to what degree.
Okay. Need more information to make a decision.
That's all. I will, I will follow up with you in two weeks to see if you've reached out to anybody. If you do reach out to somebody and they put together a quote for you, please save that. Email it to me so I could put it in the record in your file so that I know that you're actually working on it.
Okay.
Okay?
That note that was in the file had no, no signature, no date, no.
No, it's, I mean, it's, it's got a signature. It's from my predecessor.
Okay.
It just says, uh.
Which, which one of your many predecessors?
Yeah, I know. Denise Halsted.
Okay.
All right. And it says, it says resolved, but there's no notice of resolution, so that.
And the, and the, the order actually discusses the fill on the back?
Yep.
Yes.
It does. Property came, property owner came to discuss this with me, will be stone dust pile in the upland review area, discussed the regulations, and he will be back with permits for construction of new home?
So he said he'd go there, put up a new home. But he never did.
And I, and never did because there's no, there's no permit issued, there's just a violation.
So my brother passed away today now.
Okay.
Okay, well, we have a plan right now.
All right, so on that, I have to move on to somebody to do that.
And send us, and, and once we get the report from that soil scientist, then we'll be better educated and better able to tell you how to remedy and get the, the violation lifted from the property.
Okay.
Resolved. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. So, moving on. Uh, yeah, we do have minutes. Commissioner Xavier is not here and we still want to.
We could still vote on minutes.
Still vote on. On September 10th? They are, the meeting minutes from September 10th, yes. Does anybody have any comments? I was absent from that meeting, so I am going to recuse myself from any vote. It does reflect that in the minutes.
Not to vote on that?
Yes.
I respect it.
You could still vote on it because there's still four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any concerns, any questions, comments?
Staffs reviewed it and staff had no questions.
Motion to approve, minutes of September 10th, 2025. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Stewart. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Smith, all in favor.
All right.
All right.
And one of stenching. And that.
Somebody want to.
Want you to adjourn?
Adjourn?
Want you to adjourn? Commissioner Smith?
I'm going to second.
Second by Commissioner Lindstrom.
That guy? All in favor?
All right.
Hi.